It is America, the two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops, same thing, same both video and audio tape, and if anybody else in the audience is doing so, please be very worried, thank you very much. We'll go to minutes, Mr. Gagnor.
Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 23rd, 2016 as written.
Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All business. Mr. Nash, I'll leave you first. If you have anything.
You know, I'll wait till you do business.
Okay. Mr. Gagnor, all business.
I have a few things. Update on the unregistered cars. The chief had some people out looking at additional vehicles, I believe, on Pulaski Street, on Cottage Street, and over by the Village Market. There was another residence that had a few, so that is ongoing, to make sure that we rectify that problem. Also, I spoke with one of the medical marijuana companies, Heal Inc., they've been doing a lot of work and a lot of engineering, they've had their engineers in and civil engineers in, looking at the buildings. They have not yet been licensed, this is a very long process, but they are continuously in the building looking, so they are invested, and hopefully when they do get licensed, they will be in. Also spoke to the cell tower company today, they are finalizing all of the paperwork that they need, and then they will come before the planning board to go for a special permit to get the cell tower up, and hopefully get some service in this town quick. And one other thing, Ms. Gothier was in previously in regards to a road race, and she had an update, with your permission, I'd like her to speak.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name's Jessica Gothier. I actually have information for all of you guys about what the running club is all about. We are still doing it from grades three to six. I spoke to the chief, a few weeks ago, he supports it, he supports the route. We actually chose a four-mile route, because I believe the last time I spoke, we were looking into a 5K. We are still planning on having Team Hoyt, New England, at our road race, and because of the running chairs, the route that we were choosing from previous, a couple years ago, it would have not worked, because the roads are not completely finished, there's too many potholes. So the route we're taking is going down, from the elementary school down South Street, is that south? South, up Crouch Road, connecting between Crouch and Reed, going down Reed, and ending back at the school. It's doable for the four grades that we chose. We're also having, excuse me, a kids' fun run. It's also, we're gonna have volunteers face painting while some of the parents are out on the road course. Principal Duff is going to contact CERT to help us out on the roads. We are also requesting volunteers and stuff like that. We have, we, I only have one, this is my daughter, she's the one that wanted to get the running club, and we are now up to 32 registered children in the school system.
How would a child who is interested, or a child and a parent who are interested, get in touch with you in order to?
We are on Facebook, and through insurance purposes, they have to be enrolled in Warren Elementary School, or part of our school district.
Okay, are there papers on the desk within Warren Community Elementary?
Yes.
When you first get in?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's paperwork there.
And volunteer paperwork, and it's also, we are in the midst of having Ms. Sullivan helping us with our webpage, and we'll have registration forms there. We do, for insurance purposes, have to keep it with the grades, but if the volunteers have children in younger grades, they're more than welcome, because the parents are gonna be there, but we also don't want it to be a drop-off, free-for-all.
Right. What is the name of the Facebook page?
It's WCES Youth Running Club.
WCES Youth Running Club.
Yep. Can I give these to you guys?
Sure. Absolutely.
This is what our flyers are gonna be looking like, that will be passed around town.
Thank you.
And it also discusses what the running club's about, it's also the donation letter that we've been sending out. We are using, we have permission to use the 501 from Warren Elementary School to get donations in, so we have a lot of running donations coming in, and Principal Duff is also helping us with some grants. I'm also gonna be, I'm on the school boards list, March 21st, I'm their first agenda too.
Okay, and this is gonna be Sunday, June 19th, is the?
The race, the four-mile.
Is the race.
Yep, and the hours were very, when I was talking to the chief, he liked the hours, because it's, it will, a lot of the runners, besides the walkers, a lot of the runners will probably already be done the race, so it's in time for people to leave for church.
Oh, excellent.
That's it. Any questions for me?
No, so, all the information, contact information is at the school or on Facebook, correct?
Yeah, and also the email, I put the email on the flyer. We don't have a website, like I said, yet, but once the website's up, it will be up. Principal Duff had told me he'll put it on, under the Warren Elementary School page, the government site that they have now, that you guys have, he'll have it underneath there, where they can register and everything else, and the details of the running club. We are trying to make this a free sport for the kids in town, for the elementary school.
You guys see if we can get Eber to put this stuff on cable access? We'll see, we'll check with Eber, see if we can put it on cable access channel too.
Okay, thank you.
And I will again issue the open challenge to Bob La Bash, I will race him on this course.
Hey, it'd be nice, it's walking too.
You're gonna lose. You tried to do it with the tricycle.
I did, I lost the tricycle race, but you fit the tricycle.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you for the opportunity again.
Thank you.
By the way, here, my kind of staff.
Anything else?
That is all I have under all business.
I just have two quick updates under all business. Last Monday night, we met with the planning board, both water departments, Board of Health office, our office regarding the issue we have up on Reed Street, with the letters that went out to residents regarding the, the problem with contaminated wells, and the testing. So there's more information up on the website for those residents still, who need, who require, who should be getting, if you receive the letter, you should be considering it. DEP, according to the Board of Health, is still testing some more areas, trying to set up a perimeter. We've asked the water departments to consider testing the public water wells also, moving forward, we're actually possibly maybe looking at sponsoring article for a little bit of money to put aside for further work that needs to be done moving into the summer next year. It's a huge concern, and we're working on it. Attacked Senator Goldie, rural development, Todd Smoloff, and Pat Attacked, so we're working on it to see what options we have moving forward, but right now, we just wanna contend, we wanna find out what the perimeter is, and see how far it's leached out, and where it is right now. I have one other update regarding the LED streetlights. This project is getting close to startup. I received an email from Kevin Shaughnessy from National Grid, and I'll actually read his email to me today, which was very good information. "I've been informed by the Outdoor Lighting Group that a scrub of the asset value of the plant accounting system indicates that the value of the lights in Warren that you have requested to purchase has depreciated to $0. The town of Warren will only need to pay $1 for the sake of the transaction to take place. I hope to have the agreement of sale, the overhead and underground, underground, excuse me, licensing agreements, to include qualified electrical workers form, and our standard documents within a couple of days. As soon as I receive these documents, I will forward them to your attention." So, we originally did the streetlight audit, the price to purchase came in at about $50,000. Then the audit, when it was actually completed, actual price came back at $19. National Grid has determined, since we have found lights that were actually, we were being built for, that we shouldn't have been built for through the work, when I went around Scott Mansfield, and we checked the audit and checked on these lights, they've actually determined that we don't have to pay for the lights, they're giving them to us for $1. So, that is a huge plus to this project. I toured the town with Jason Tanco from Tanco Lighting last week, to identify some other lighting concerns that we may have, checked with the school department regarding Warren Elementary and the outside lights, see if that was part of their lighting project that they had coming up. So, in a nutshell, I'm hoping that this, we pilot the street, maybe after the May meeting. Prior to that, we're looking to have an informal meeting, or an informational meeting, with residents who have concerns, who want this project dissected a little bit more, so we'll have representatives from Tanco, ourselves, present to go over the whole scope of the work with the design engineer, and we will pilot the street, and the project itself should take no more than two weeks from start to completion. And I'm hoping to have it completed by the end of the summer at the latest. So that is my last update. Thank you. I have nothing else for all business. We are moving on to correspondence, Mr. Gagnor.
Chief LaVoy submitted his monthly fire department report as of February 2016. James McKean submitted the monthly emergency management slash CERT report for February The office received a request from Greg Majewski, requesting a key for future use at the school office building for Warren youth soccer.
Well, wait a minute, let me ask you a question. Can we just receive a key from Warren Soccer? Right, so now they're needing it for the springtime?
They're needing it for the new person who's in charge of youth soccer. Mr. La Bash?
I think Warner has been in charge of who gets keys and who doesn't use them. And she's done a good job of it, and I believe it right where it is.
So, as long as, my only concern with that, and I am in full agreement, I'm fine if they need to go to the police department, sign it out, sign it back in, I'm okay with that, it gives us a running tally of who's in, who's out, and when.
As long as everybody's doing the same.
Right, as long as all this works, as long as baseball's key is back, as long as any of the basketball, you know, if there are any other keys out, as long as we have them all back in, and everybody's being treated equally, I'm fine with them going down and signing in and out.
Am I reading this wrong? It sounds to me like they're requesting a key permanently, or just the use of the key.
That is the, I think the prior gentleman who had the key was assigned to him personally, and so that gentleman has since returned the key, my understanding is this organization would like a permanent key.
Yeah, so it's difficult to sign the key out, so you're okay with that?
If that's what she wants to do, that's what I said, right? She's in charge, that's what she's been doing.
Right, there's no other sports, there's no other organization that has a permanent key to them.
Okay.
So Marty's signing it out.
Nobody else has got one, why should they have one?
The only gentleman, with your permission, Mr. Chair, the only question that, concern that I have is, do we know where they're maintaining their equipment? Is it in that, that little room down at the end of the stairs?
Soccerist, yes.
Yes, soccer and baseball.
The only concern I have, is I actually received a call from Mr. Gilman, he said he was sending somebody down to borrow the key to get access to that room, this office does not have access to that room, so I don't know.
It's just a padlock, correct?
Excuse me?
It's just a padlock, correct? On that floor?
No, it's a door lock.
A minute.
And I can get you a key.
We should, we should maintain a key in the building for that, just for purposes of emergency.
Yes, I can get you a key.
But with regard to that room, whoever, Mr. Gilman, or whoever's responsible for that room, perhaps, I don't, I mean, I only have one key.
There's, there's two boards in there, you're talking soccer and baseball both.
Okay. So, are they contacting Mr. Gilman for access?
I think it was Marty was even telling football, that they don't have their meetings in that room, I don't know where he gets the authority to tell them that, but I think that's what was happening.
I'm only concerned, I have, I'm only concerned with access to the building, unless they're in the building, there is no access to that room unless they have a key.
So, well. So is he asking for that key?
No, he's asking for the, he's asking for the key that they originally had, but with that.
The key to the building, is what he's asking.
The key, Mr. La Bash can make the key for us to have up here, in case anybody has to get in that side little locker room area, correct?
But if he needs to get into that room, does Marty have a key to that room?
I don't know, that's, I don't know what to say to him.
Alright, so if Marty has a key to the room, because his equipment is in there, then this gentleman should have a key to that room, because his equipment is in there.
I didn't even get a key last year. They must have gotten their last year, correct?
They must have a key now, we lose the key to that room now.
So, we'll find out, if they actually have access to that now.
Alright.
I'm just letting you know, I don't have access to that.
I just, I don't want it to have to come back up, so let's vet it all out now, get it all out now, so we know exactly what's what.
Okay, so that's fine, approved, and we'll get the key from Mr. La Bash for our office. See if I'll be able to get him.
Okay, so a key to the storage room, no access to, I mean, no key, permanent key to the building, correct?
Right, he can sign it in, sign it out.
You got one more thing, sir?
I do. Raby's Clinic will be held on Saturday, March 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Warren Highway Garage, located at 87 Brimfield Road. The town clerk will be present to issue licenses.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna go to agenda items. We have a request for reimbursement submitted under Chapter 90 funding, the amount of bonus for Cahill for $14,870.21, and Brimfield Road, Route 19, for $59,447.38. We need a motion and a vote to approve that for town.
Zulped.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's the, the board.
Yeah. Mr. La Bash, anything? There's two. On the right.
Yeah.
There's two. Yep. Thank you. Okay, we have an agreement by, in between the Town and Land Engineering, Inc., notice to proceed for the Highland Street Engineering Services, contract fee in the amount of $37,490, identified as Phase Two of the CDF1 FY 2015 CDVG program. I will entertain a motion for the chair to sign.
Zulped.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have the city and town owner agreement for FY 2015 for the CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Project in Brookfield, in the amount of $26,000. I will entertain a motion to?
Zulped.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I signed it already. We also have the city and town owner agreement for FY 2015 for the CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Project in Brookfield, in the amount of $26,000. I will entertain a motion to?
Zulped.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
You're on budget discussion, FY 2017. Mr. La Bash, I'll turn to you first, anything you wanna mention first?
Such as?
Anything. Parks, anything you wanna bring up?
Well, I joined in to talk budget, and it hasn't gone from finance yet.
Your liaison has been out for this year?
The lines are up, excuse me.
Your liaison has been out for this year?
They came out last night, but it hasn't gone from there to the board.
Okay. Alright, you have anything you wanna bring up?
I'm waiting on the board.
Maybe I can bring it up as long as Gary's here, they were, when I went to the finance committee meeting, that we went to for the information, not to mine, but I went as the slip one, they were suggesting maybe putting fireworks on for the 275th anniversary, I don't know where that's going, if that's gonna go on my budget, I have to wait to see, is they gonna put that on my budget?
Well, we haven't really discussed where that money's gonna come from, because that's one of the things I brought tonight to talk to, talk to you about, to discuss and decide whether we wanna go forward with that, as the town, the 275th, in a, you know, fiscally, we can't afford a huge shindig for it, but Dave Delansky had made the suggestion that perhaps on Labor Day, we could have a fireworks display done, much like we did the last time we had one, up in the fields, and back at the high school. That was his suggestion, so I'm here tonight to present that to you, to see what, how you feel about it.
If I can add to it also, we were discussing last night at our meeting, that we could, we've been trying to put on concerts in the common, that we could maybe put on one of the groups up there the same day, and make a longer day out of it, make it kind of an afternoon evening thing.
Like they did before, having the band, like, up in the entry area of the high school, something like that?
Somewhat, yeah, somewhat, but it, but probably a longer one, maybe down the field, I don't think I wanna confine them up to the, to the porch, if that's the only thing that's going on, see, there's more things going on up there. So if we just do the concert on the common, if you wanna call it, just do it on the field down there before they set up the fireworks, we'll make a better day out of it.
I mean, I think it's gonna take a little bit more organization than just deciding whether we wanna do it or not.
Oh, okay, I mean, I, is it $11,000 or $9,000, I'm sorry?
$11,000's gotta cover the whole thing, that's, the fire department has to go up there, that's approximately $1,500 also today, they have to pick up the fireworks when they cross the town line, and stay there with them until we're gone, and then we have to do cleanup, because you're starting school next day, so.
Okay, I mean, I'm not?
The concert number is something that the parking rack would be taken care of anyway, so they won't be able to do it.
And that's all part of the family funding, like it always was, right?
Yeah. But it wasn't one big family funding, it just did a concert up the school.
My opinion is, I'll take it under consideration personally, I'd like to see what happens after tomorrow night, when we meet the school department and West Brookfield and the other boards, I wanna see where we're at with that, because there's a lot still to be determined. I'm not against it, I just wanna see where we stand financially with other departments in the budget process, so, I mean, I know it's there, you know, everybody's aware of it, but let's see what we can, with the bigger budgets at this point in time first, before we go spend the $10,000. Like I said, I'm gonna put Reed Street in that area before anything at this point in time, for a lot of reasons, so I wanna make sure we're concentrating our efforts on that, and, and taking care of those residents, and seeing what we can do to make sure that we're maintaining, you know, a quality of life up there, and people can drink their water, so, it's a concern, and that's where I want our efforts to be focused at this point, just to make sure that we're doing what we can. So, but that's not off the table, I'm just saying, there's other things right now, I'm putting before, prior, before that, so.
Well, would you want it, would you want it to be added into the parks budget to see how the total falls for the year, or do you want me to omit it, and then leave it on the table, so that you can add it afterwards?
I would rather you omit it, but I think it's a one-time thing, we're not looking to add that line item back in, so maybe it should be an article. If it's a one-time thing for 275, I don't wanna put it into a budget and have to take it out next year, which is my, my thought, probably.
That's fine with me.
The 275 is not going to be for 276, unless we come to a cash windfall, we put it back the way it was, but I don't think that's gonna happen right now, so.
So would it be the Parks Department that puts that article forward?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was saying, my budget was incomplete, because we didn't have the, we didn't know what they wanted to remember in there.
Do we know when the downtown project is gonna get started?
I don't have the exact date, it's, it's?
What month?
Summer. I can tell you it's summer. You know, you're gonna start to see some staging happening over here, on the building property over here, for the construction companies, so I believe we're gonna be close enough. They're not gonna be able to access Hitchcock, correct? I think that's what we determined, they can use this area, but they're not gonna be able to drive down Hitchcock with the heavy machinery, to get to the center of town, so, but you will see some equipment starting to be staged shortly, in anticipation for it to start, but it's coming, I don't have the exact date though.
June, July?
Summer. I know that. I'm gonna add to it, Marah, I'm sorry?
With your permission, Mr. Chair, we did receive notice from National Grid Gas, that they will be starting work on the gas lines on Old Milton Fountain Way, and that work is to begin at the end of March, beginning of April, so that's preliminary work. With regards to the remainder, I do not have that in mind.
I said, we've seen the surveyors downtown, so.
Yeah, they're running around, but it's coming, along with the street lighting and everything else, and it's fun to sit with the treasuring wall bar borrowing on that project also, so.
Well, it's just the prince of the town hall, we're planning another duck race, and, you know, if that's gonna interfere with access to, what is that?
Well, what's our code? Well, you can swing down Quaybuck, and come down.
Yeah, we tried that last year, and we didn't, we didn't really get that much attendance last year, but maybe we'll have to market better.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably a thought, a good thought, is probably to market better. Yes, Nick?
Did I, I'm sorry, did I miss comments and concerns?
I took them off this evening.
Oh.
For the first time, since I've sat in the chair, it'll be on next week. So you didn't miss them, sir, I'm sorry.
So, I don't have a chance to?
Is it all business? Is it an old business?
It was under your last meeting, yeah.
So if it's under all business, when we get the?
Let him ask a question.
Ask the question, since you missed all business.
Question first, a concern after, the fact that you are gonna be signing a contract or a paper of some kind with National Grid regarding what you just said.
Yep.
I would advise you to read that carefully.
Oh, yes. We've received, well, when that documentation comes in, council will go through that, we've allocated some funding in that, in that amount that we're looking for to cover council, but those documents are being read thoroughly, and we had some discussion last week with the lighting contractor and our council, their 28, 30-page contracts are gonna go through with the finances that come, so that will be done, sir.
Okay, my concern is, last, at your last meeting, you made a comment that it was established that you were gonna be paying for the trimming on the streetlights.
It's coming out of that $200,000, there's some, there's, I think it was 12 or 13 lights that were identified that have tree growth around the top, that we have to clear, so there's a portion that our tree warden had gone out and had a quote drawn up, regarding how much it would cost to do the pruning around those poles, because they won't work, they won't switch out the fixtures unless those poles are completely clear of any limbs.
My concern is, who determined that that needed to be trimmed?
That came from the streetlight audit, from the engineering company Tanco, who did our audit, they made the determination that you, matter of fact, a lot of them are on my street, they're just buried within trees, so the heat of the, the element of the lamp, you wanna free it up and allow the light to illuminate, so.
I understand that, but when, when they trim around tree lights too, they're not in fact trimming around the wires also?
To an extent, I mean.
They have to go back to the tree, don't they, and the tree comes out from?
I don't know if that, I didn't, I didn't actually ask Mr. Lacy if what it involved trimming around those trees, but they do stick out, probably about four feet from the pole, the wires are back towards the pole, from what I've seen, a lot of them are just out there. Scott Mansfield and myself drove around also, and looked at a lot of these lights, gave read that they need to be cleaned up.
Well, I don't, I don't question that part of it, Mr. Chairman, but I do question the fact that those have been that way since way back, I assume, and that would have been the responsibility of National Grid.
Correct, and this is why they're also not charging us for the lights, I think, because we determined that there's been some problems.
I didn't know that till tonight.
Yeah.
Neither do we.
So, no, it came to me today.
I'm saying, if, this is probably moot now, because of the fact that they're throwing that big carrot out there, but their responsibility is to trim around the wires, not ours, that's still their, their wiring.
It is, once we take ownership, then it's our responsibility, but like, going back to your point regarding the amount of money for that, and now that they're not charging us, you know, but a dollar, to take ownership of the lights, I think it's, I think our assessment, and what we stated to them regarding the fact that we identified lights that we were being charged for that we didn't own, lights that didn't exist, and the fact that there was some issues with pruning and tree work, I think they felt that it was beneficial just to say, you know what, Warren, we owe you this, so, you're off the hook.
But I don't, well, just like I said, I would read that carefully, because that probably involves trimming their wires later on.
Well, there's about, there's about three or four new contracts to be coming in, regarding that, yes, right?
Thank you.
I also didn't realize that comments and concerns was an issue tonight, but if I was to keep everything totally friendly, could I just comment on something for a couple of minutes?
Can I let you bring it up under new, is it new business?
That's sure.
Can I wait till new business?
Absolutely, no problem.
Can I ask you just one question about what Nick just said?
Yep.
You were saying that we're taking the maintenance around the pole and the light, he inferred the wiring, and then you said, we own that, so are we responsible for the wiring as well?
No, we own the light, the fixture, we own the fixture, the cobra head and the, and the pole that holds the cobra head, we own that, that's what we're purchasing, or we're receiving.
So, National Grid is still in charge of cleaning wiring from trees?
Yes, yes. Yep, just one. We own the light. The fixture, we own the fixture, the cobra head and the, and the pole that holds the cobra head, we own that. That's what we're purchasing, or we're receiving.
So National Grid is still in charge of cleaning wiring from trees?
Yep. And that is the responsibility, with your permission, sir. That's the responsibility of the citizens to make a call if you see them around there. Because if they don't know, they're not going to just drive around looking for work. You've got to let them know that that work needs to be done and they do come out. Keep in mind, the plan is, the plan is, is probably after the annual meeting is when I think we'll probably schedule that meeting with the public and Tanco and our design consultant and have to come out and go through this and dissect it for some time and answer a lot of questions that the residents may have about the work that's coming up and what's being done. And I'll be able to outline cost to the penny for everybody as to what we actually, what we're saving. And the projected savings 20 years down the road and what that's going to do to our, our street lighting cost annually. So that will be coming most likely after the annual, that meeting. Right?
I just, the poles are on the, the lights are on the poles next to the wires. They're going to clear the wires. That would pretty much clear the lights, right?
Correct. I think there's been a lot of lack of work-
No, you're talking about nothing.
When it comes to cleaning around the wires and the lights for years now. And when they do, they butcher the trees. A lot of them die and they're cut in circles and-
Pretty soon you won't even find people that do the manual labor anymore, so.
So, we're still on budget discussion. I don't care if you have anything else?
We're doing quite well with getting the budgets in. We've got all but one that has not been completed.
Who's that?
I haven't been able to get in touch with the veteran.
Our new agent?
He has no email.
He does?
The stuff, well, I put the stuff in his box.
Okay.
And so, you know, his liaison's made effort to get in contact with him and-
I'll reach out tomorrow.
You know, his budget is not as crucial, although he did have a sizable increase last year. So that if that was to happen again, that does make a large increase to the overall. So we need to know that figure.
With your permission. I did have a very brief meeting with Mr. Lapine. I made him aware of the necessary, that he needs to-
I didn't know that there was a Mr. Lapine.
Our new agent?
I didn't know that, so.
Okay. I did make him aware of that. He is not aware that there is liaison, nor was I aware that there was a liaison. Who might that be?
John Nason. He's a liaison to every department.
I can get you your contact information from Mr. Lapine.
Great.
You're off the hook, Mr. Lapine.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Anything else, Ber?
All I have now.
I know, we're planning to try and get together and go through some of this. We've got some questions. We're going to, we have some of the departments and there's a lot of work to be done, so we're going to be planning probably some evenings and some Saturdays. I mean, we've been here a lot in the past week. But there'll be a lot more meetings we'll be around, so we have a lot of work to do regarding this.
But I think we're going to need to sit with you at some point to go through that.
I was hoping that we sat prior to this already, but-
Well, we didn't last year and I, I'm not concerned yet because we are in such much better shape than we were last year, I'm happy to say. The decision-making is going to take the time. There's a lot more decision-making this year than there was last year.
I think tomorrow night's going to be a tell-all. I think we need to really get some answers tomorrow night.
I think you're probably right.
I would have liked to have still had the meeting. We reached out to Westbrook Field to try and have a meeting prior to the meeting with the superintendent. It didn't really happen. I did speak to a board member over there to try and get an idea on what's going on, but I just have to wait till tomorrow night. I really, you know, their meeting's a different date than ours and I don't know. You know, I, listen, I know where we stand and I spoke to our treasurer regarding that. But like I said, Reed Street's an important project right now. So, yeah. There's a greater impact to the tax rate if other things happen, actually. So, you know, but I am interested to see what happens tomorrow night, you know. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to discuss your thoughts on the above minimum with finance?
There have been two discussions so far.
Are we in agreement yet?
No.
Okay. Well, there's no plan for me to put out anything tomorrow night. I want to listen and hear. I know the 21st is coming soon, but I need to hear from everybody else. You know, it's going to be a huge impact to the tax rate, one way or the other, possibly, potentially. So that's it, I guess. Anybody else have anything for budgets? This is Colin. It's so nice to see you tonight. Do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
I don't. I just, I mean, I've been following along on the Westbrook Field Warren Light. I know Westbrook Field is somewhat beside themselves just because, you know, the override that they will have to have. Whether, I mean, for the school and for themselves. All those years, I think they've used the free cash to offset their operating budget, which is never recommended by this side.
No. I, I think, I think our treasurer, our finance committee and our departments do well with what we have and I'm proud to say our town manages its money pretty well. For what little bit we have, we protect it well and we do with it what we need. You know, but with that being said, there are some things we need to start looking at again, replacing things and wage scales and minimum wage. There's a lot of different things, but, you know, there's a lot. But regards to Westbrook, I don't know where they stand. I've heard so many different things, I couldn't tell you.
I don't think they even know.
So I'm hoping that tomorrow night is, is an eye-opener for all of us, so we have a better grasp on where we are, where they are.
We can stop making decisions based on fact instead of-
You guys don't have a lot of time either. I mean, you want to put the books out to get done, you said?
I'm sure.
About the middle of April.
Tomorrow has to be a productive meeting. Has to be productive. I'm hoping it's not a shouting match and arguing that. I think it just needs to be productive adults collaborating to, you know, what's in the best interest of towns and the kids, you know, all.
I think that the view of the FinCom is that we're going to support the select board. And we're looking to you to be the voice of the town.
Okay.
So we're going to sit there to listen to what's been said and not planning on making any kind of decision.
Yes, I did speak to our treasurer last night. I'm hoping he can attend the housework tomorrow. I brought him up to speed on that, so I'm hoping that he can make an appearance and have an idea and give us some insight, so. Well, no more tomorrow. You know, I'm looking forward to it, so. With that being said, is there anything else in the budget discussion? No? Treasury words, Mr. Gattner.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve payroll warrant 120 in the amount of $34,547.14 and vendor warrant 123 in the amount of $136,213.47 both dated February 29, 2015.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion, I'm sorry. I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 121 in the amount of $372.30 dated February 29, 2015.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 122 in the amount of $2,130 dated February 29, 2015.
Well, that one, I got seconded. Motion's made, seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve payroll warrant 124 in the amount of $35,607.56 and vendor warrant number 126 in the amount of $89,454.17 both dated March 7, 2015.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 125 in the amount of $1,291.25
Second.
Dated March 7, 2015.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will make a motion that we approve warrant number 127 in the amount of $840 dated March 7, 2015.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. New business, Mr. Corvo.
As everybody knows, the town elections are coming up and I just wanted to tell everybody that I'm running for selectmen and I'm running for a three-year term on the planning board. I got a lot of extra time and I just want to serve my town in that capacity. And that's basically it. And I did want to just mention, you know, this town's got a lot of serious problems and, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, so, but if the elections are coming up soon and if anybody wants to debate me on anything for the select seat, I'd be happy to, you know.
Oh, I appreciate that and I'm glad you pulled papers. It's good to see whoever wants to run, you know, run. You know, we encourage all to apply and pull papers. Once we see what the candidate pool is and, you know, if the warrants have maybe a candidate site or something, we'll determine that maybe sometime towards the middle or end of April. Once the papers are pulled in, so when we know and if we see who's running, we'll, we'll find out if there's three or four of a pool. We'll consider doing it, because I know we've done it for the last two years, so we'll keep that up, show them for you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that. And all I'm saying is that there's a lot of important issues and if the candidates came in, it would be a help, you know. Even if it took them in another half hour, so be it, whatever.
No, that's no problem. It's good for people to identify with people who are pulling papers, so we'll definitely keep that open.
Under new business, is the sergeant assigned to the selectmen's meeting every week?
No, tonight I asked him to be here. That was my request.
For security reasons?
No. Well, I contacted the chief and asked him to be here tonight. It came strictly from me. Anybody else? New business, Mr. Lavash?
You do, I'm sorry.
I have three words.
Aye.
I told you before that we had the drain pipes finished off down the bottom of the town hall.
Yep.
While we were down there, we found a piece of water pipe that's pretty much running out. It's a section about this big that I told him not to touch because it looks like if he touches it, to me, it's going to fall apart and flood the solar. So I had him write an estimate on that. It's only $545. So I'd been okay to have him go down and do that.
Yeah, is that coming out of Bruce?
We haven't determined that yet. There is, there are, excuse me, Mr. Chair, would you permit? There are several funding sources and I believe Mr. Lavash and I have discussed them already.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the town hall is, the friends of the town hall, the, well, expressed interest of maybe paying, you know, thoughts of whatever it is.
When we have amounts, correct? So in one of those lines?
Right. That there are funding sources available to cover.
But the police department does have a maintenance line, so.
Well, we're going to probably use those resources first.
Good.
That's the plan. So for 500 or so?
Yeah, because it's, like I said, the pipe is already leaking.
Okay.
So we'll get that done.
Yeah. Okay, everybody, you'll get this, yeah?
Is the pipe made out of gold for $500?
No, it's probably, they might have to cut out the labor. Labor's probably around about, what, 75 an hour?
He just wrote a general.
I'm sure.
Was it just a small section of pipe, though?
The opening's small, but I'm sure they've got to cut out a larger section of pipe because it's probably weak a ways down. Yes?
Does the chief still have 9,000 in his maintenance account?
Does the police department budget still have 9,000 maintenance? I don't know that amount exactly. I'm not sure.
Because I don't think it's everything.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know without checking.
But the plan is, is we're not going to use friends of the town hall money. There's money in one of those lines to use it to take care of that repair. That's Mr. Lavash and I went through that, so that's where the funding source will come from, so. Anything else, bud?
Yeah, the next thing is the automatic door opener, handycam door opener. I spoke to him this evening before I come down. He's going to have a gentleman down here tomorrow morning to start on it.
Good. How long is that going to take?
It shouldn't take very long. I don't think, they don't replace the door. The electrician's coming in to wire it and then they just change the actuator up top. That would be number two. And number three, Tom gave us all emails, they assumed all of us, about the Beaver Downs.
Yes.
And the one up in Nord Street, he said is running out. And if that gives way again, that goes down to flooding out the bottom of Main Street again. So despite being a state property, I would like to have Tom go talk to the state or email them to to talk to the state or give information to talk to the state or whatever.
He tells them to go right ahead. And I'll just copy us on the correspondence, all right, Marla? So we know what's being sent up there? If you can just copy our office assignment. Just so we know what requests he's putting into the state. If they contact us, that's fine. Brian?
But that's what we have to, we have to contact them if we're going to do anything and we got to do something.
Well, you mentioned Tom. I was just curious, has anybody seen the potholes on the overpass, the railroad? Bridge, right in the center of the town, potholes?
Yeah, they're-
Okay, I mean, we didn't spend any money on-
Keep in mind, just, and I don't want to get off, off, and I have something else, Brian, but keep in mind, Chapter 90 funding and what we have for repairing roads and bridges is minimal. I mean, we're, we're going to accomplish some work.
What we spent on snow removal and, and, you know.
I got you, but we can't just take that money from snow and ice and put it towards the roads. We can't do that.
Okay, I don't, I don't-
That money is allocated for one thing, so we can't.
I know, I just don't, the piles are getting pretty big and right under the bridge.
And he's got projects planned for the spring, so, but we, like I said, Brian, we can't take money from snow and ice for that. Do you have anything?
As a taxpayer, Dario, it's unacceptable.
Okay, noted. You have anything for her?
I do. Very large congratulations in a hard-fought battle by our Quabog Cougars, both boys' and girls' basketball teams last night. Boys beat Granby 57 to 53. And they will be playing next on Saturday at 12:30 in Amherst. And the girls beat number one seed Ware, 46 to 43. And they will be playing Saturday at 10:45 in Amherst. I wish them the best of luck. And hopefully we will have the sirens going when they get back into town like we usually do, so if you hear a lot of hooting and hollering somewhere around 2:30, 3 o'clock on Saturday, we're hoping it's for good reasons, so. Go Quabog.
I'm sorry, what time do those games start again?
The girls game is starting at 10:45 and the boys game will be starting at 12:30, both in Amherst.
Good deal.
That is a good deal.
Anything else?
That's what I got for today, sir.
Actually, I got a question for Colleen. Is it the paper now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I read in the paper that now we are part of the Ware, Warren, and West Warren are going to be part of Ware River News, correct?
Yeah, it's being included in that.
And some people asked me that and I saw it on last week's paper. But some people were saying there wasn't really anything in there this week in the Ware River News. And there wasn't anything in the Quabog Current really, so besides Super K's little block in both papers. But we are moving to Ware River News, correct?
Yeah, there should be some stuff from Warren and that.
Okay, because some residents had some concerns because they didn't see anything. They're like, well, where are we now? What's going on? Okay, all right, just to confirm. So our next meeting actually is tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Quabog Regional Middle High School Library. 6:30, correct, Marla?
Yes.
Yes. With surrounding towns, FinCom, the school committee, school department, so that's where we'll be tomorrow night. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.